All right. Good evening and welcome to the August 22, 2022 City Council Roundtable. I am Mayor Ross and tonight's roundtable is being brought to you live using video conferencing technology provided by Zoom. Tonight's recording will be posted on the city's YouTube channel. So, thank you for joining us tonight. Our city clerk step in, or helper, or whatever, Dana McCall will be taking the role. Councilmember Christensen here. Councilmember Benson is not. Councilmember Holloway?
Here.
Councilmember Johnson? Councilmember Lasse?
Here.
Councilmember Mayhew?
Here.
Councilmember Watton?
Here.
Councilmember Benson has requested to be excused, absent from tonight's meeting. Is there a motion to excuse Councilmember Benson?
So moved.
Second.
It is moved by Councilmember Christensen, second by Councilmember Lasse, to excuse for Benson. Any discussion? Mayor Pro Tem Mayhew?
Moved to also excuse Councilmember Johnson.
Second.
This is moved by Mayor Pro Tem Mayhew and second by Councilmember Holloway to excuse Councilmember Johnson. All those in favor for excusing Councilmember Benson and Councilmember Johnson? Say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay? Right. The passion, motion passes unanimously. So, our first item on the agenda is to approve the agenda. Council may have a motion to approve the roundtable agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by, who is it?
Councilmember Mayhew, I believe.
Councilmember Mayhew and second by Councilmember Holloway to approve the agenda. Any discussion? Seeing none, all is approved, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay? All right. So, tonight's agenda is an ARPA discussion during the August 8 council meeting presented different possibilities on how to allocate the $850,000. It was recommended by council to establish at the next meeting, bill the date, a council roundtable to identify topics for distribution of ARPA funds. So, our finance director, Jen Ferguson, will help introduce a discussion tonight about the potential uses of ARPA funds. You should have the matrix in your packet of different ideas. Thank you. All right. Categories include preservation of funds. This was to include a line item in potential uses for obligations and agreements that the council already has agreed to. Category two included technology improvements and there is a list in the packet that identified possible upgrades to conference rooms, to the council chambers, and then, of course, some security infrastructure. In category three, we've identified community investments to include perhaps a second round of funding for the community, similar to around one that went to businesses and nonprofits, to contribute towards a funding source for the community spray park, spray ground project, that's a multiple say, for land acquisition. This would be in support of council priorities, additional small business development programs, and those would include potential marketing or tourism plan, and those projects that identified in the CIP, a broadband facility study, feasibility study. Category four included public safety and that included dollars in support of a proposed take-home vehicle program for the police department. And then category five is council ideas that we have not identified on the plan. So, I'd be happy to answer any questions about what has been proposed in the potential uses, but wanted to turn it over for free-flow discussion of the council for items that they would like to see included in the list. Councilwoman Lasse.
Hey Jen, can you remind us how much, how much, the amount of funds we do have available coming, or at least estimated funds coming with this next round or what we're holding currently?
Well, we currently had in the second tranche is of 1.9 million. We have included a portion of those funds in the proposed or the financial forecast. And so, we've identified a, 850,000 is the estimate of funds that would need to be allocated. Please let the record show, Councilmember Johnson has joined us at 6:05 PM.
So, so we've allocated, so 850 would mean that we allocated 1.05, which is what my memory is of the two budgetary items.
It has not been officially allocated by the city council. It has been included in the, in the budget, yes, in the forecast.
Forecasting.
Councilwoman Watton?
Mayor Ross, may I suggest that we institute your round robin and just get everybody's either input or questions and give everybody an opportunity to speak once and then, and then we can follow up after that.
That sounds good. Do you want to go ahead and start?
Okay. Yes, my two priorities, if you want to hear my priorities, the first one is security of this building and anything that we can do to make sure that it is up to date. And in my mind, it's like 150,000 tops, 200 maybe, but it's outside our current budget and it's something that's of urgent need. My second one is to put as much emphasis into helping our local business community. How that looks will probably, in my mind, be different from the last round of ARPA funds. And, and I think that's really important for us is, you know, if we bring a committee together to discuss, you know, how do we prioritize that? I don't want to get in the weeds here, but those are my top two. I think the other things we can address through our, our annual or biennial budget process and find the money in, in our current upcoming budget discussions.
Thank you. Councilwoman Holloway?
I just, so the GIS enterprise software, I'm, I'm confused why that's not in our, just operating funds, not ARPA funds. Most of these, I'm confused why they're not in, in our operating plan versus the special use of ARPA funds. Again, the focus was be to increase revenue, reduce costs, or support retention and acquisition of employees. Um, I'm, I'm, I'm not getting it. I'll leave it at that for now.
Mayor Pro Tem Mayhew?
So, I think the overriding need is that we, we have an operating budget that's in absolute crisis. We're not going to be able to fund the next biennial and it's going to get worse by the time we pass it because inflation is just persistently saying, staying high. I think giving money away when the city so desperately needs it and when we're planning on raising taxes this fall by 1%, I think that, that if you just use the transitive properties of math means we're raising taxes to give money away. So, I think that's a mistake. I think we should preserve the money for inflationary risks because I think it's all going to get consumed very quickly in this biennial budget, operating budget. My second point of view would be that I don't think we should incur any costs that have associated with them an ongoing operating cost because we don't, we haven't identified how to pay the ongoing operating cost. So, I think that to the extent we don't preserve this for inflation, I think we should, and not only we're going to have to raise taxes, at least 1%, if not go out and ask for more, I think we'll also be looking at some very hard choices about cutting costs. So, I think we should preserve the money for that. But if we don't, like I said, don't spend anything that creates increased operating costs to maintain it or operate it. So, I'd say one-time employee retention type activities are a really good idea, in my view. And I think any kind of infrastructure improvement that supports tourist or resident use, things that make our city permanently a better place to do business or to enjoy, so infrastructure, I mean, would be great. There's identified on this list. So, I think that could be, say, a grant program or some new identifying of new infrastructure improvements. It could be what's listed here under, looking at the CIP for various infrastructure improvement projects that are already there would be great. I think those would be sort of my, my priorities.
Thank you. Councilwoman Lasse?
I'm, I'm going to share some similar items to the previous council members. I also have concerns over our ability to fund our operating budget for the next biennium, let alone just the capital budget, where I don't, I don't think we have the funds to just roll over the CIP into a budget. We're going to have to make some cuts, we're going to have to make some, some hard decisions and it's going to create some challenges across the board. I second Councilmember Mayhew's concern that, you know, everything that we spend the money on should be spent on something that does not increase operating costs that it is done. So, I would, I would strongly encourage us to preserve the funds for any inflationary risks until we know an understanding of where our budget is, where it's going to go and what the impacts are for how we fund it. If we were to spend dollars somewhere, I would limit that solely to community organizations that have a social services impact in the community. Our, our local, our friends and neighbors are going to need some help because things are not going to get better, they're going to get worse. And we're already struggling with several of our community organizations to support those that need help. And so, I think if we're passing funds along, it should be solely to those that are in the not operating businesses, per se, but social services groups. Those are my two, and I wouldn't go beyond that.
Thank you. Councilwoman Christensen?
Um, I think my priorities are similar to my fellow council members in terms of I'd like to see, to the extent that we're going to be spending the funds, I'd like to see the funds going towards small business development, increasing, you know, tourism and marketing, things like that, that will help our current businesses, both now and going forward. I would also like to see either an increase in funding for human services or something along those lines. A lot of the families are still struggling and that is a big concern. And then I've also been in contact with the principal and vice principal at Timber Ridge and I know that they're having a lot of problems getting, like the students from Panorama to come to school and that's an ongoing issue for them. And I know that, that they'd like to, to at least talk about ways that that could be addressed. And I realize that that fits in with the human services and benefit to the residents as well, but that's an issue that they see significantly.
Council Johnson?
Yeah, risk of sounding like a broken record here on some of these, I'll keep my comments fairly brief. Definitely, I am concerned about the operating budget and, and the inflationary risks there. So, I think that would be probably my number one priority, followed by probably trying to increase some of our visibility within the wider metropolitan area with tourism. So, whether, whatever kind of, of activities that are allowed by ARPA, I think that would be probably my second priority. And I think third after that would probably be the social services. So, that would be kind of my ranking.
So, there was a letter, I think it's still in draft form, that did come in from the EDC, Economic Development Commission, and, and it does emphasize, you know, this small business development, tourism, and had different ideas such as, you know, making investment in, in the community. One was, you know, enhancing the grass amphitheater on the ridge. And then this weekend also heard from some people that would love to see amphitheater at Sandy Cove as part of the Sandy Cove development. So, there's different things that they've come up with that some are on the lists, including the lighting program, and other tourist incentives. So, I think once we're done with that letter, we can probably send it to us, we'll forward it to you. So, Councilwoman, we'll report to you.
I just had a question. I wasn't familiar with the, the grass amphitheater on the ridge. Is there any more detail around?
Well, that's where the, the trees are.
By near to the community center?
Right near there, yes. So, so enhancing that area.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Lasse?
You mentioned the, I think you were talking about the holiday lights when you said lighting. I believe, if we haven't fully covered it under the LTAC funds, we're going to in this next round, hopefully. And so, I don't think that's something that would necessarily need these funds for this year. Obviously, every year we'd have to fund that if we want to continue with it, but we planned ahead for that one. So, I just want to share that. I'm sure Councilmember Johnson will do a great job of making sure that gets taken care
So, there's a variety of ideas and I'm hearing a common theme. How do you want to, I guess, how do you want to come to a conclusion? You want, obviously we'll have further discussion, but do you want, you know, the committee to talk through to these or what are your suggestions? Councilwoman?
Perhaps it's a process of elimination and determine, I heard a couple council members mention that there are things that should be addressed in our budget and not necessarily the use of, of ARPA funds and that might help narrow the selection down a little bit. Not that we don't like these things, it's just, is this the right use of the funds when we know that it will go faster than possible? The, the, the second theme I heard is setting a certain amount aside for reserves, inflationary reserves. And maybe, maybe that's the starting point is, you know, what do you feel comfortable with setting for a reserve number?
Mayor Pro Tem Mayhew?
Yes, I just wonder, as we think about some of these things that might be capital spending, whether it's infrastructure or CIP items, infrastructure, just thinking broadly about infrastructure items, given where we are in the year, is it, would I be correct in thinking anything of that nature would probably have to wait till next spring to happen because we're probably past the time we could contract and get something infrastructure-wise to happen before we get to the rainy season? Is that a reasonable or correct thing to think?
Such as, like the spray park or?
Anything that's infrastructure. So, I see one item that's listed on here is 2023, 2028, CIP included various infrastructure improvement projects. So, that item, I sort of mentioned this idea, although I'm not sure this necessarily resonated with anyone, but some kind of infrastructure improvement supporting resident or tourist use or spray park and anything of that nature, what, that is capital spending. I'm assuming that couldn't happen this calendar year anyway because of where we are in the season?
That's correct.
So, I guess one idea I have is that if we were to have some amount that we thought we might be willing to use in that regard, we could, we wouldn't have to make that decision now because it wouldn't, wouldn't lead to anything happening in the near future anyway. That's a decision we could may, maybe, I would think we'd have to make it, I mean, probably get advised to what the lead time is, but probably by the end of the calendar year, we'd have to decide on such things. But it could be that if we want to put some money aside or at least consider putting it aside for infrastructure-type items, then maybe we could sort of focus on trying to identify a dollar amount with the idea that we've really got a few months to really figure out which particular items that might go to. I don't know if that would be a helpful approach or not, but I was just sort of reacting
So, in other words, delaying, delaying the decision, because right now it seems like there's several, I guess the majority of you have talked about operated budget, inflation, reserves. There's a similar theme going on, which is, I actually, category number one, preservation of funds. So, you know, we will have a better idea in September, right, as to the, what the biennial budget looks like and inflationary costs and things like that. Councilwoman Lasse?
Yeah, I was just thinking, if we, several council members mentioned, you know, human services or social services or, you know, programs of doing that, that way, that takes time. But we have some structure in place because we went through the early ARPA funds. So, we have a list of social services organizations that applied and received money in the very first round, which had two phases of it. Then we had just the recent funds, the, what was the first one? First one was the?
CARES.
CARES, thank you, CARES. Now, we have ARPA, which also has a group of social services groups, and we have an application process that they went through. And I'm wondering if that, if it's better for us to at least go down the process of, of soliciting those organizations for funds to know what the ask is, knowing that in both cases, when we did CARES and ARPA, they did not get the full amount that they all asked for, but they got something. Because it may take several weeks to get down that road and get that information, tabulate it, have the interviews, clear everything, and then by that time, we'll be at that point where we may know what we have for funds available. So, at least that process is in place and we can, we can make that decision that, okay, we do have, drawing a number out, we have $100,000 to, to give to the social services based in Snoqualmie. And we go that route.
Do you want to touch on the human services application? Okay. Mayor Pro Tem Mayhew?
Yeah, so, further to that thinking is, as part of our biennial budget process, each year, we have a committee, our social services committee, that has done, for those of you that aren't familiar with it, unbelievably fantastic work the last few years. When you see it, if you haven't already, you will be very impressed, I promise you. As part of that process, as each, as, as we go into this time of year, which is, so it's now underway, they open up an application process to social service agencies who serve Snoqualmie or Snoqualmie residents, you know, in the valley. And this is something they've been doing for years. We get a whole set of needs. There's a whole process by which they sort of describe the needs and the help that they need. So, we'll get a bunch of input from that. I'll say generally, for most years, we have not been able to fully fund all the requests that come in. Now, part of that is intentional. Sometimes some of those requests are duplicative. So, one of the things the committee tries to do is advise us where they see duplication and, you know, which ones they would recommend or how we sort of best use money so we don't split it, but really focus it on particular needs. But in any event, that's going on now. So, we'll get a lot of information from that process as well. And then, so that could be additional input to a decision like this.
Councilwoman Watton?
I agree with Mayor Pro Tem Mayhew that that would be a good place to start. The one, the one thing I would modify is that currently the way that the funds are distributed, having been on the receiving end for one organization or two organizations, is that it doesn't include salaries. And when you're in social services, the, the organizations I've been involved in, 70% of the, the revenues go to staff because it's staff that makes those programs happen. And, and so, if we could remove the stipulation that it's for program and not staffing and keep it for programming and omit, you know, and allow those organizations to use the money to help fund positions as well, I think that that would serve the community best.
Mayor Pro Tem Mayhew?
Yes, I'm not sure where we're at in that process. I have the idea that we may have already sent out the applications or we're just about to. I don't know exactly where we are, but.
The deadline, September 1st, something like that.
To send them out or we've already sent them out and it's, applications are due by September 1st?
Applications are due, September 1st or 2nd.
So, to Councilmember Watton's point, I had a similar thought even as I was kind of talking, which is, especially if those organizations that work with us every year and come back and ask for repeat of the funding for the programs that we've previously funded, that if we maybe could, I don't know if we can piggyback into the existing process or that would be too disruptive, but if we were able to ask them, hey, are there additional needs either for staffing, could be a category, or we do have some extra money potentially this year because of separate funding from ARPA, are there some things that you would ask for on a one-time basis that in addition to what you may otherwise be asking for? If there's a way to maybe piggyback onto that process to try and get that additional information, that might be helpful to us.
Councilwoman Watton?
I'm just curious, Ms. Ferguson, what's the current allocation for social services this year or the remaining part of this year? Do you, do you have an idea?
I don't know if there is anything remaining for this year because it was included in the, in the biennial budget for 21, 22.
But for which the, the applications that are coming through social services committee?
I guess I would need some more clarity.
Yeah, so the process we follow for this money is, we make the awards for the biennium in the biennial budget. This is what we've done in the past. So, for this two years, including the year that we're in, that was fully budgeted and allocated, both. So, when we actually budget, we actually name the organizations and the amounts for the full biennium at the time of the budget. So, a year and a half ago, this was the whole biennium amount. So, typically, those are dispersed once or twice a year. So, by this time, you'd expect that that's fully now dispersed from this current biennium that we're in.
Okay. So, I guess for clarification, I'm sorry, Mayor, I guess, jump in, is that what was the total amount for the biennial? amount for the biennium that was set aside?
Somewhere in the hundred and thirty thousand range.
Just so that we can kind of get an idea of what might be appropriate.
Yeah, it's about a hundred and thirty thousand. So it's not a huge number. And that is percentage wise, the largest we'd ever done in Snoqualmie. So yeah. Ah, I was buying time for you, sir.
Thank you. So I have the biennial budget table in front of me. In essence, for the human services fund, we have appropriated two hundred twenty-six thousand dollars in twenty-twenty-one and two hundred thirty-eight thousand dollars in twenty-twenty-two. So roughly a total of four hundred sixty-four thousand dollars, four hundred sixty-five.
Yeah. Counselor Watten?
Shall we attempt to put some numbers in each category and then just kind of fine tune it? And then work forward from there?
Such as?
I believe Councilmember, Councilmember Lassay mentioned a hundred thousand towards social services. We talked about a rainy day fund, if you will. We just put a number in there and figure that out. Say maybe two fifty.
For?
Figure out what, what each category seems to be appropriate.
Counselor Holloway?
So I guess I'm a little confused in the conversation with reserves. We, we started conversations where our reserves were pretty well double what they needed to be. And we have ongoing conversations of financial best practices we want to put in place, which set it around sixteen point five up to about mid twenties, lower mid twenties. It was twenty-two and a half or something like it. So I guess I'm, if we think we need more reserve because of the climate and everything else, we ought to have that reserve conversation and potentially pick a number on what we want reserves, sixteen point five or twenty-two or twenty-five. And that's part of our budget conversation. I don't know that we need to take these special funds, which again ought to be headed toward special purposes to, to shore that up. It may come to some hard decisions in our operating budget of what do we slow down to make that reserve percentage happen? Okay? So I'm, I'm not in favor of taking a chunk of money out of this and putting it in a rainy day fund. We have a rainy day fund. We should manage it the way we manage. I could be wrong.
Counselor Lacy?
No, I'm in, I'm in the same line of thinking as Councilmember Holloway because the, the number I put out there was just a number. It wasn't meant to be applicable to this conversation. And the danger is when you use numbers to back, they get used against you. So I think what Councilmember Holloway is suggesting is actually, I mean, it's, it's, it's hard to come up with a, a specific conversation about what should go where when we don't have the bigger picture of the entire budget proposal review. We haven't finished, like Councilmember Holloway said, haven't finished the conversations around the rainy day funds and all the procedures and all the things we want to get done. What I was suggesting with the social and human services was to get an understanding of what sort of funds they need. Not that we just set a number to it, but let's get that understood. And maybe some of it goes to help support making sure that we can fully fund dollars similar to what we've done last year. Well, our last two, in the last two bienniums or the last biennium, last two years, last biennium for the next biennium, so that we continue to fund those that need it the most. And then, and then that's all a part of that budget conversation. So you know, I, I think I, I think we're all very strongly want to support those folks that need the help. And we want to make sure we have the right budget, both operating and capital for the next biennium. Any sort of other items, some of the smaller items in here or, or things that could be incorporated in the budget can be a part of that conversation as long as I, as long as we're not expending operating costs at the same time. We put it in is something that's really, I think that's really important. That was a good point. So that's, I, I don't think we, unless somebody has another suggestion, I don't know how we move forward with allocating specific funds at this time until we see the big picture.
Mayor Pro Tem Mayhew?
Yeah, I would just see my, my understanding of. So first off, I completely agree with Councilmember Holloway that our reserves are funded. Reserves are not an issue in my point of view. My concern is when we talk about preserving funds for inflationary risks is based on some preliminary information we've already received. The expenditures for the next biennium that are proposed are going to be greater than our revenues. We don't know how to cover the budget. So that's going to mean discussions about cutting services or trying to raise funding. And my thought is, well, that's the, when I see preserved funds for inflationary risk, that's, that's what I think. We've got inflation that's just running rampant across our budget and it's going to get worse before we see that budget and get a chance to pass it. And so we've got these funds for city purposes, I think, funding our current service levels is the first priority. And I think until we know how much of this will be needed for that priority, I think it's premature to discuss the other items. But we're about to go through a process of figuring out, at least to some degree, the social services needs. We're going through a process of, we're going to see an operating budget, we're going to work through that. We couldn't get capital money spent before next year anyway. My thought is, we've got a sense of, and maybe we, if we don't feel we've adequately captured this, I, I thought that I heard some fair amount of agreement amongst the councils to what the three or four priorities would be. Or four would be something we could decide as we get into the operating budget. And sort of make decisions then as we see how much is needed for each of these things, it'll sort of become more apparent to us what, what a smart way to use it might be. So that's my point of view.
Counselor Johnson?
Yeah. So it's an interesting point about the fact that we have reserves and why would we use some of this for that if that already has some funds in it? And the way that I am approaching that thought, at least presently, and maybe I'm thinking about this all wrong, is that prior councils kind of set up what our budget outlook could end up being, meaning, you know, they figured out how much reserves we would have. And I don't know to what degree they plan for the current kind of inflation that we're experiencing as a result of in many respects of economic things related to the pandemic, sometimes distantly related, sometimes not. But regardless, it all kind of goes back to that. And that these ARPA funds are essentially about communities recovering from the impacts of the, of the pandemic. And so to me, it would make sense if we kept kind of our operating, or excuse me, our reserves more or less intact and try to find ways to fund them and, and stuff as needed. But at any rate, but the, these funds from ARPA could be used to kind of offset that imbalance that's been created by the, by inflation. I don't know if that word salad made any sense. I hope it did. Maybe someone with more of a financial background could say what I said with the right words, but yeah. Yeah. So to me, it would still make sense for us to use some of these funds as kind of a bridge to cover that inflation. And hopefully what that could do is it could take some of the pressure off of the idea of cutting back on our services. If maybe we don't actually need to do that, we just need to make a little bridge to the future. Maybe there are some cuts that need to come, but we could soften the blow by doing this without having to dip into our reserves too much that we already had.
Thank you. So you mentioned about, you know, small business development, helping businesses through possibly tourism or holiday lights or, you know, they have a variety of lists. Is there consideration of providing funding for, for tourism? Someone said more of a larger area marketing type approach is one idea. Food for thought? Counselor Christensen, do you have any comments?
Yeah, I do like, and I had mentioned initially that I do think that that would be helpful to have some small business development through tourism or otherwise through a marketing plan. I, I do think that it'd be helpful to know exactly where, where things are in terms of the operating budget. So we know, we have, I bet basically so that we can have a better framework for the conversation. I think we do need some additional information back from the human services group. I think that'll be really helpful to see what the need is there. I just, I don't know that we can make a firm decision at this happen. Some, some pretty significant themes coming through. And I think that it is helpful for the conversation going forward. I just think we need a little bit more information and framework to really make a decision and really figure out where the numbers should be.
So it sounds like the two, the top categories identified, one is preserving funds for the inflationary risks, kind of holding out to wait to see what the general operating fund looks like, when inflation looks like. And the second thing was looking at human services, you know, waiting for applications to come in and see where the need is on those. Any other? So it sounds like it's more of a wait and see to figure out where we stand. Is that correct? To start with. Counselor Watten?
So along that same theme would be going back to the EDC perhaps and asking for their input. We've got a couple ideas, but we really need to understand what it is that you really like us to do. And we need like a, a dollar amount and how it would happen, whether it's the city's responsible for it, or it might be the Chamber of Commerce is responsible for making it happen. And then maybe some, some assistance from, from staff and in helping to give them some numbers if, if, you know, there's something that they need to do for holidays. And it might be something the city's done at a, you know, base level. And then like holiday lights as an example, maybe not the best example, or, or if it's a marketing campaign, what that would look like so that we have more context for making a decision.
I think when their, when their letter, letters finalized, I could say, received a draft today and it's requesting two hundred and thirty-five thousand for various much needed capital improvements, cleanup projects, marketing campaigns, and then ongoing events. And so, so some infrastructure ties into the ongoing events, such as we talked about, you know, amphitheaters. Let's see. Special displays that draw in additional visitors from, from outside the area, et cetera. So I think they'll finalize that and send it out. But that's what they're, about the dollar amount that they're thinking. So are we? So are we going to take the approach then to wait to see about the general operating funds? Human services applications? And then if EDC can finalize their letter, we'll get more information regarding that, which would help small business development? So? Okay. Any other comments? Okay. Okay. So seeing none is, since there's no further business on the roundtable, is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Mayor Pro Tem Mayhew and second by Counselor Watten to adjourn. And we'll be back here at, so all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes and we are adjourned at six forty-five PM. And we were re-adjourned at meet again at seven PM. So, thank you. Right? Council, we're starting our regular meeting of the city council. The time is now seven PM. And we just completed a roundtable. So the record showed that all councils present except for Councilwoman Benson, who was excused, and Counselor Lassay will be joining us remotely. So Council, please stand and join me in saying the pledge of allegiance. Counselor Johnson, would you please lead the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the republic of America, to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Can we move to our first item on regular business is to approve the agenda. Council may have a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Mayor Pro Tem Mayhew and second by Councilmember Holloway. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those that approve, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? The motion passes unanimously and the agenda is approved. Next item of business this evening is the appointment to the Snoqualmie Arts Commission. I am nominating Dennis Pierce to position number six on the Snoqualmie Arts Commission. Mr. Pierce has a bachelor's of science in photography and graphic design from Western Washington University, and the appointment will expire in twenty-twenty-six. May I have a motion to approve the mayor's appointment of Dennis Pierce to position, position number six on the Snoqualmie Arts Commission?
So moved.
Second.
So moved by Mayor Pro Tem Mayhew and second by Councilmember Watten. Is there any discussion?
Mayor, I'll, I'll speak up. I've had the pleasure of knowing Mr. Pierce for the past couple of years, and he will make an excellent addition to the Arts Commission. So thank you for your appointment with our confirmation.
Yes. Excellent. Okay. Any other comments? All right. I think we're ready to vote then. All those approve, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay? So the ayes have it and it's unanimous to appoint Mr. Pierce to the Snoqualmie Arts Commission. And he has joined us this evening and he just wishes to wave. So thank you. Thank you for volunteering. It's great. Okay. So I'll read the first proclamation tonight, number twenty-two dash fourteen, designate September as National Preparedness Month in the city of Snoqualmie with the theme, life is built and worth protecting. Prepare for disasters to create a lasting legacy for you and your family. So whereas emergency management is a vital public service, and whereas National Preparedness Month creates an opportunity for every resident of the city of Snoqualmie to prepare for their homes, businesses and communities for any type of emergency, including natural and man-made disasters. And whereas investing the preparedness of ourselves, families, businesses and communities can reduce fatalities and economic devastation in our communities and in our nation. And whereas emergency preparedness is a responsibility of every resident in the city of Snoqualmie, and all residents are urged to make preparedness a priority and work together as a team to ensure that individuals, families and communities are prepared for disasters. And whereas building an emergency preparedness kit and plan will protect and prepare community members for disasters and create a legacy for you and your family. Now therefore, I, Catherine Ross, Mayor of Snoqualmie, do hereby proclaim September twenty-twenty-two as National Preparedness Month. We do have our deputy fire chief Bailey, would you like to say a few words?
Chief Carrera just wanted me to point out a couple of things. Thank you, Mayor, for the proclamation. It's important to point out the importance of being prepared to the community because it is in the event, we are a small community. In the event there is a, a natural disaster, resources could be delayed, could be a long time before we see any help. So we're going to have to rely on each other. So the importance of having the month, we are going to, in September, we're planning on working with the communication staff to push out some information to the residents through staff to push out some information to the residents through social media, just highlighting different things they can do to make sure that they're prepared, to get their family prepared with communication plans and supplies they need. And then also just to point out, there, there have been some questions. We'll take the opportunity, the CERT program, the community emergency medical teams or the community emergency management teams that we have set up for the, the area, those were delayed or put on pause because of people to have any classes. So the plan is we're going to have a refresher class in the fall to kind of, the people that are already certified as CERT volunteers can, can have an exercise and do a refresher. And then in the springtime, they're looking at doing a whole, a new class for new volunteers. So look for that coming up. They're looking at doing like some options with some hybrid options. So just wanted to point that out for those that are wondering where the CERT classes are. They, they are coming back, just takes a little bit planning to get going again. Thank you.
Thank you. The next proclamation, number 22-15, designates September as Suicide Prevention Awareness Month. Whereas September is known globally as Suicide Prevention Awareness Month and was created to raise the visibility of the mental health resources and suicide prevention services available in our community. And whereas the goal is to start the conversation about mental health and the impact of suicide to help de-stigmatize the conversation and help connect people with the appropriate support services. And whereas most students do not struggle with suicidal thoughts or behaviors, however, according to the Washington State 2021 Healthy Youth Survey, 16% of 10th graders in the Snoqualmie Valley have seriously considered suicide and 13% of 10th graders have made a plan in the last 12 months. And whereas Empower Youth Network, a Snoqualmie Valley-based nonprofit with a mission to promote and inspire youth to lead safe, healthy, and successful lives, incorporates suicide prevention programs in its work, including How to Help Your Friend, a peer-to-peer suicide prevention training curriculum, serving middle school students in both the Snoqualmie and River View School Districts, as well as youth mental health first aid, which is a nationally recognized training that helps all adults understand how to assist youth in crisis. And whereas each and every suicide directly impacts a minimum of 100 additional people, including family, friends, coworkers, neighbors, and community members. And whereas the city of Snoqualmie publicly places its full support behind those who work in the fields of mental health, education, and law enforcement. And whereas global organizations, as well as local mental health partners, including Empower Youth Network, serve on the front lines of a war. And many still refuse to discuss a stigma regarding suicide and mental health issues is far too prevalent. Therefore, I, Catherine Ross, Mayor of Snoqualmie, Washington, do hereby proclaim the month of September 2022 as Suicide Prevention Awareness Month and encourage all residents to take the time to understand the importance of mental health education and recognize that taking care of ourselves and others include taking care of mental health. So we do have a representative from Empower Youth Network with us this evening. Helen Witnick, would you like to say a few words?
Thank you, Mayor Ross and honorable council members for this proclamation. We are grateful for your partnership, which helps to start the conversation about mental health and the impact of suicide. We also invite you to join us for our next virtual and no cost Youth Mental Health First Aid Workshop on October 22nd. Among other topics, this workshop includes how to interact with a child or an adolescent in crisis and how to connect youth with help. Thank you again for your support and partnership.
Thank you very much. As we're moving on to our main agenda, we would understand if you didn't want to stay for the rest of the evening. Or you're welcome to stay, it's up to you. So obviously, so at this time, we will provide time for residents to comment on items not on the agenda. First, a few ground rules. Snoqualmie residents who are not present have a right to have their elected representatives perform their duties on behalf of the city in an efficient and orderly manner. Therefore, comments will be limited to three minutes each. Wait to be recognized and state your name and city of residence record. Director comments to the council as a whole and not to individual members. Please note that this is not a time to ask questions of the council, mayor, or staff or to engage in debate. The council will quietly and respectfully listen to your concerns. And please also note that because of the city council consideration, the mill site PCI plan is a closed record proceeding where the council considers the application based on the record that was made before the city's hearing examiner, public comment on the mill site quasi judicial land use matter will not be accepted. And last, please respect the decorum of these proceedings as all respect will be afforded to you. So with that, would anyone like to speak to any concern that is not on the agenda tonight? So you can raise your hand online or at City Hall. Yes, we do have one person. Please state your name and city you live in.
Yes, ma'am. My name's Dory Ross and I do live in downtown Snoqualmie. And I wouldn't say this is a concern by any means. It's actually more of a huge thank you to everyone in the city for Snoqualmie Days this last weekend. I was on the committee and it was flawless. I mean, every single department was amazing. The police presence was very well appreciated and everyone had fun. They were very engaging with everyone. And then the Parks Department dream team of Phil, Dawn, Keith, and Ken were incredible. They came out, it was like we had company coming the day before. They cleaned every single garbage can, they brought extra garbage cans, trimming of the trees, blowing of the sidewalks. They kept the event so clean, we had people coming up to us and saying they had never seen an event literally this clean. There was no garbage anywhere. The next day it was like it never even happened. So I just wanted to say thank you. You guys rocked and we appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I will say it was an awesome event. And I received, I received a text from a grandmother who said her four-year-old child really, really loved it. And she did too. So you had like multi-generational people that just thought it was an awesome event, so. Right, anyone else? Not seeing anyone else, raise your hand. So at this time, we will move on to the consent agenda. Approval of the city council meeting minutes from the roundtable meeting dated August 8th, 2022. Regular meeting dated August 8th, 2022. Special meeting dated August 9th, 2022. Approval of the claims approval report dated August 22, 2022. AB Agenda Bill 22-119, Resolution 1623, declaring surplus property and authorizing the sale of city property from the IT department. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second. Is moved by Mayor Pro Tim Mayhew and second by Councilor Christensen. Is there public comment regarding this item? Please understand that public comment is related to this topic. And public comment would be limited to two minutes. So I'm looking online, not seeing anyone raise their hand. There is a phone, the person has called in. So if you want to raise your hand, you can push star nine. Not seeing anyone do that. And anyone, not seeing anyone in City Hall. Okay, so we move on to, councilors, any discussion regarding the consent agenda? Seeing none, all those approve, say aye.
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 Any opposed, nay? Hearing none, motion passes unanimously and the consent agenda is approved. So next item is community reports. The first report is Public Safety Committee. And it is the Quarterly Fire Accreditation Report. We welcome Deputy Fire Chief Bailey to present the report.
Doubleheader.
I know, right? Holy cow. That's what happens, the chief goes out of town, right? Just to highlight this again, we brought it to you, I believe it was two or three months ago. This quarterly report is, is part of our accreditation process. Part of the accreditation is being transparent with your, your public officials and the, and the people that you serve and looking for ways to continuously improve. And, and part of that is looking at your outputs that you put out, the, your timing, what you're kind of doing, your calls that you respond to. So this is presented to the Public Safety Committee. It'll be presented every quarter. So on the second month of the quarters when we're going to present it. And we kind of go over it, but it was advised to be part of the agenda packet just so that the whole council can see it and kind of track where we are from quarter to quarter. If you have any questions, if, if you read over it before the, the council meeting or if you have any questions of the report overall, feel free to contact me. I'm the one that would be the point of contact as I'm the one that puts it together. So that's what I just wanted to point out this time unless anybody had any questions from when they, they read it as part of the packet.
Beautiful.
Thank you. Any further report from Public Safety Committee?
No, that, that I think was one of the big topics. We also, I guess, did briefly talk about the Fourth of July and how incidences and problems were way down in comparison to previous years in terms of people using legal fireworks or being unsafe.
Excellent, thank you. Next committee report is from the Parks and Public Works Committee. Agenda Bill 22-108, Water Reclamation Facility Phase Three Update and Amendment to RH2 Services Agreement. Councilor Holloway, would you please read the summary and motion?
The agenda bill seeks to amend the existing services agreement with RH2 Engineering for the Water Reclamation Facility Phase Three project to include the final project design permitting and support during bidding. The Water Reclamation Facility Phase Three improvements will increase sewer treatment capacity, enhance performance, and replace critical components that are nearing end of life of their expected service life. You might already have it down here. All right. Too many. Move to approve the amendment of the Water Reclamation Facility Phase Three Design Services Agreement with RH2 Engineering.
Second.
So it's moved by Councilor Holloway and second by Councilmember Johnson to approve Agenda Bill 22-108. Is there public comment regarding this item? I'm not seeing anyone online nor at City Hall raising their hand. So councilor, is there any discussion? We do have the engineer on hand in case you have any questions.
Yeah, let's keep in mind, this is 600, about $665,000, but it is the next task in doing what we said we want to do as part of the CI play. So as stated, the supports in the bidding process does final design and also helps us with Washington agency review moving forward. And we did have a budget discussion and this is all looking good and in budget.
Right. All right. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed, nay? Hearing none, motion passes unanimously. And the Water Reclamation Facility Phase Three Update Amendment to RH2 Services Agreement is approved. Moving on to the next committee report from Parks Public Works is Councilor Lasse.
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to confirm you can hear me remotely.
Yep, it was unanimous, thank you. Including your vote, thank you. Okay, adopting, Agenda Bill 22-113, adopting the general sewer plan. Councilor Holloway, would you please read the summary and motion?
This agenda bill seeks council approval to adopt the general sewer plan dated July 2, 2022 and authorize final submission to agencies. The general sewer plans are required by governmental entities prior to providing sewer service and must be prepared in accordance with Washington Administrative Code 173-240-050. The primary purpose of, of the general sewer plan is to identify and schedule sewer system improvements that correct this, correct existing deficiencies, ensure a safe and reliable sewer system for the current and future customers. Get the motion. Move to, move to approve Resolution Number 1621, adopting the general sewer plan and authorize final submit, submit to agencies.
Second.
It's moved by Councilor Holloway and second by Councilor Johnson to approve the general sewer plan. Is there any public comment regarding this item? I'm not seeing anyone that raised their hand online. Nor anyone at City Hall. Councilor, is there any discussion? Councilor Holloway.
So I have Andrew from staff here to talk this so you get the correct technical description of what's going on here versus mine.
Thank you, Councilmember Holloway, and good evening, council members. So this presentation is to provide a summary on the general sewer plan prior to adoption and final approval by agencies. Quick fun fact on the general sewer plan. Next to the general sewer plan here is a photo of me at graduation and my favorite professor, Dr. Stensel, who's a worldwide expert in wastewater treatment and was featured on page 162 of the general sewer plan. Provides some analysis for the city and has recommended the improvement for phase three. All right, to business. The purpose of the general sewer plan is to identify and schedule sewer system improvements that ensure a safe and reliable sewer system for the 20-year planning period. So that'll take us through 2040. This is an NPES permit requirement as well as a Washington State code requirement. An overview of our system. We have 47, approximately 4,700 connections. The sewer planning area is eight square miles. We have 17 lift stations, which those are located at the bottom of a sewer basin that will pump sewage uphill. The force mains are, we have 10 miles of force mains, which is pressurized pipe, 47 miles of gravity pipe. And our treatment plant is sized to handle 2.15 million gallons per day of flow and 5,200 pounds of load, which is measured as, as BOD. This is a map of our, of our sewer system. It's included in the general sewer plan. Some of the upcoming CIP projects that we have are pump station number one, which is currently under, underway, Kimball Creek Pump Station, and then the Water Reclamation Facility Phase Three improvements, which are across the river. This document will continually be used for guiding the CIP projects in the future, for future CIPs. And here's an overview of our reclamation facility, which we have the upcoming phase three improvements, which will, the bulk of the work will occur at the oxidation ditches here. We'll be partitioning that out. And then we'll also be doing work to the headworks, the clarifiers, and improving the salt handling facility. So the general sewer plan projects out through 2040. And in 2040, they estimate 15,500 residents on the sewer system. The capacity of the treatment plant will be expanded to 2.7 million gallons per day and can handle 6,500 pounds per day of load. This includes capacity for future developments such as the casino expansion or mill site development. Approximately 25% capacity will be increased. And then just to recap, the general sewer plan was originally presented to council in fall of 2021 at a roundtable. And following that, it was submitted to agencies. We received the agency comments, responded to them in the winter. In spring, we went through the SEPA process and the casino expansion sewer agreement was executed. And the GSP was updated. All these changes are included in Appendix L of the general sewer plan. And we're looking to adopt it and submit it to agencies later this summer. With that, if you have any questions, please let me know.
Councilor Watten.
Andrew, thank you for presenting. This is just spellbound. Could you go back to, to your slide of the service area? I just wanted yeah, ask a couple before, right there, oh, right there. Dotted line, is that our current service area then? Or is that the expansion with bringing in the hotel? Or is that the expansion with bringing in the hotel?
So the red dotted line includes city limits. Okay. Which would, so there are portions of that would, that would include it.
I'm more interested in the stuff that's north of it, the, the purple dotted line. You just, yeah.
Yeah. Yes, that's the urban growth area. So that would also be included.
Okay. Currently, or is that because of the expansion?
I believe that would be the current urban growth area.
Okay.
So it's current, it's current urban growth.
But it's not, we don't have service in that area right now.
We do not have service, but both the utility plans and the comp plan need to plan for that growth.
Okay.
You, you can't build it when they get here.
Right. Right. Okay, thank you. That's helpful.
Don't we provide, provide some service in unincorporated?
We do. We have several connections that are outside of city limits, but in the urban growth area.
Right.
Our sewer service area.
Right. Councilor Johnson.
That's exactly what I was gonna say.
Do you have any other questions for Mr. Vining? Any discussion?
All right.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. More discussion is, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay? So it's unanimous, the, we are adopting the generous sewer plan. Resolution sixteen twenty-one. Okay, moving on. Councilor Holloway?
Just to close out the Parks and Public Works, we did have a discussion about the Emerald Ash Beetle. Beware that about five percent of our, five to six percent of our city trees are ash trees, of which this beetle is bad news. It's about five hundred and sixty-five trees. It's in the U.S. now. It's been spotted in Oregon. So we're, it's just getting on your radar that we may have an issue with some of our trees moving down the road if and when the Emerald Beetle starts to come up north. Climate may keep it. We'll see. Fortunately, Phil and team have done a good job, as well as the city planners to begin with. We've got a pretty diverse tree population. So we should be able to handle some of these events as they come through, but this one may be on the near-term horizon. We'll have to see. And that's it from Public Works.
He did, he did provide a plan showing how he would replace them in stages. What he said.
Did, yeah, I was hoping we'd have that here tonight, but he did, well, he at least provided a graphic showing us where the, where the ash trees are in the city. And we had some discussion about different dispersions. Right now, we have a tendency to plant a block with a particular type of tree to keep the look appropriate as opposed to having different kind of clumps of trees and things like that. But yes, we did review a map showing the, where those ash trees are within the city.
Great, thank you. So next committee report is Finance Administration and Agenda Bill twenty-two dash one twelve Staffing Plan. This is for the Behavioral Health Specialists. Councilor Mayhew, do you want to read in the summary and motion?
Chair, I'll go ahead and read that. As I was, if there's faults here, it's me. I chaired the meeting. As part of the City Administration ongoing effort to access delivery of core services to the community, staffing adjustments and position changes have been reviewed and proposed. Let's go down to, and I'll get into specifics as we get into it. Move to approve staffing plan for an FTE count dated August twenty-second, twenty twenty-two.
Second. This moved by Councilor Holloway and second by Councilor Christensen to approve the staffing plan for Behavioral Health Specialists. So this is, um, Behavioral Health Specialists, this is one of our top legislative priorities for funding for mental health and substance abuse treatment services. Representative Callan was instrumental in getting, creating a proviso with the input from our police chief, Phipps, North Bend Mayor McFarland and myself for this Behavioral Health Coordinator Pilot Program. I received funding of a hundred and fifty thousand for this position. And so, Behavioral Health Specialists will help our officers and first responders when they respond to someone in crisis. There is an MOU that's included in there that we will be bringing back to you probably early September. It just gives you an idea what that looks like. North Bend will be sharing in the cost as we go forward through, I guess, mid, mid, next year. So the timing is from a hundred and fifty thousand goes from January first through June thirty-first, next year, or thirtieth. And then we'll have, pay for half a year of Behavioral Health Specialists next year. And then we're split, obviously splitting the cost with them, so. And Chief Phipps, do you have any more comments about it?
Well, you're doing a great job. I feel like I'm, I'm always talking about this Behavioral Health Specialist, but it is a very important position, so.
Yes, it is.
I hope you have an opportunity to read a little bit about what it, what it is and how we proposed it to look like. First of all, why, why is there a need? Ten percent of the responses that we go to deal with people in, in crisis, mental health crisis. Over the last two years, we have documented at least four hundred calls for service in which we were dealing with people in mental health crisis. And I think that that's actually very low because there's a lot of calls which we don't even take that kind of information down, that they're going through a crisis. And so I think that the four hundred is even low. There's many, many communities and that are doing this type of effort in trying to have a Behavioral Health Specialist address these issues. And we all know that the police usually are the ones that, that go to these type of calls. We are not the trained experts in this area. We do the best we can. We do crisis intervention training, but it's not our expertise by any stretch of the imagination. And I think by having somebody with us as we patrol, responding to calls for service, that has that training, that has those skills to be able to deal with somebody in crisis and not only that, but also manage that person. So we don't have to go back time and time again and really exhaust our resources. Maybe we can help them figure out to better themselves and it's a quality of life issue, not just for them, but it's a quality of life issue for this community and this valley as well. We're one of the very few, if not the only one right now, that is really patterned it off of embedded within the police department. And of course, the fire department is going to be involved in this as well. But the idea is to embed them, that person with the police department. Most of them, it's a separate entity. It's a separate unit to respond. I think it's important that people see us as these helpers, not just always the negative thing, that maybe we're there to actually help people. And I think that this helps bridge that gap that we may have by embedding that person with us. It's, it's supported, as the mayor said, by many, many legislative, like Representative Callan. She's been instrumental. Absolutely instrumental in this. She, we had, this all started with a short meeting that we had. And she asked, she, she cut the meeting and asked me what I thought would be the best approach and who knew, about a week later, she actually had the job description written out and forwarded to, I mean, it's just amazing. And she's supported us through the whole, along with many others, Mayor Ross, Mayor McFarland, and Sarah Perry from King County Board of Supervisors. So all of them have been instrumental in this and we are now starting to even enhance this as we move forward. And we haven't even started yet and enhance it to a, a, kind of a hub to where we would bring, what do you bring somebody that's in crisis when they need help? And they're talking about having a hub, maybe in Issaquah, close by, so we don't have to wait six hours for help that we can take them to that location. And all the communities in this area are working on that. So this is far-reaching. I don't want it just to be one year. That's what this is. The funding, like the mayor said, is a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. It's a fiscal year, so it's going to end in the last day of June in twenty twenty-three. I have a proposal to the mayor for her budget for this position to be ongoing and also share costs with North Bend, who's very supportive of this as well. So that's my hope, is that this just wouldn't be a one-time thing, that this will be an ongoing thing. And of course, we will show in the first year that it's instrumental in making us better. So if you have any questions? Thank you.
Councilor Holloway?
Did you want to take, before coming back to chair, do you want to take public comment?
I do. So is there a public comment for this item? Seeing no one online at this point. Not seeing any at City Hall? Okay, Councilor, is there any discussion? Councilor Holloway?
I, I do want to reinforce because some of the wordage in the then-chair's opinion gets a little weak. In the agenda bill, this is a one-year FTE adjustment to the police department to reflect the grant as received, to support that one year for, for this behavioral specialist. I, I think it's a good thing and we ought to look as we get into our budget discussions going forward of how do we support this moving forward. But right now, what we got is one year's worth of budget and we ought to go ahead and allocate the FTE, FTE and get this service up and running.
Any other discussion? Councilor Johnson?
Yeah, just having someone in this position is kind of a dream come true. This is a wonderful thing to have for, for our local law enforcement, another tool in their toolbox. I certainly do hope that we can find within the operating budget moving forward to make this a permanent position. Be very supportive of that.
Any other comments? Councilor, Councilor Christensen?
I just wanted to speak up in support of it as well. I think it's fantastic that we have the, the funding on hand in order to make this happen going forward. I think it'll be a huge benefit to the community to have someone who can actually follow the cases going forward as well as be helpful to the police department and hopefully taking some of the, the pressure out of, of those interactions as well. I look forward to seeing what happens as we're able to track metrics and all of that and look forward to seeing the, the great work that I know will come of this.
Right. Any other comments? Right. Ready for a vote? All those in favor, say aye. Any opposed, nay? Councilor Say, what was your vote?
That vote is an absolute yes.
Okay, great. Thank you. Okay, it is unanimous. So the motion passes for approval of the Behavioral Health Specialists and mid-budget revisions. Moving on, the final committee report this evening is Committee of the Whole Agenda Bill twenty-two dash one two one Revised Biennial Budget Development Calendar. Councilor Mayhew, do you want to read in the summary and motion?
The twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four Biennial Budget Development Calendar provides a timeline of expected city council meetings, workshops, and milestones for the upcoming biennial budget development process. At its special August second and third two twenty-two twenty-two meeting, the F and A Committee was unable to finish review of the proposed financial management policy and along with the administration is requesting additional time for review. Move to approve the revised twenty twenty-three to twenty twenty-four Biennial Budget Development Calendar.
Second. Moved by Mayor Pro Tim Mayhew and second by Councilor Christensen. Is there any public comment regarding this item? I'm not seeing any online or in City Hall. So is there any discussion regarding this item? Seeing, seeing none. I mean, to vote, all those in favor, say aye.
I have my hand up.
Oh, I didn't see your hand up. Okay, Councilor Say.
All right, just want to clarify this. It looks like it's it's memorializing the decision to have special F and A meetings, meetings on the twenty-ninth and thirtieth, which have, which have been discussed. However, it indicates a meeting on September twenty-fifth as a regular council meeting, but September twenty-fifth is a Sunday.
You're not available then?
Well, there is a Seahawks home game.
Oh, okay.
That's where we were going to have the meeting.
But I'm available.
There you go. Sounds like it needs to be the twenty-sixth. Oh. So I need, so we need to move that, obviously make a correction, twenty-sixth and then the special workshop the next day is the twenty-seventh. So thank you for catching that.
Not a problem. So I guess we probably need someone to.
Do you want to make the second? Councilor Say is, question to correct two dates?
Yeah, move, move to make, I guess we can make incidental corrections, but move to correct the council meeting to September twenty-sixth and the special budget workshop to September twenty-seven.
Right. And I heard Councilor Holloway has seconded the motion. So all, any discussion regarding that particular motion? Councilor Holloway? So we're voting on the revised dates. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay? Okay, going back to the original motion of approving the overall budget calendar. Any further comments, discussion? See none? All those in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed, nay? So the motion passes, so it's unanimous to approve the, the biennial budget calendar. Okay, so moving on to the mayor's report. So this goes back to the, thank you, everyone that helped with the Snoqualmie Days. It was such a huge success. There were a lot of people that attended. It was a fun parade. There were many, many vendor booths and a great lineup of music. And thanks a lot to the planning committee, the volunteers, to the city staff, including parks, fire, police, community liaison, and, and many more. I mean, it was amazing number of volunteers that they had, so. And there's also like twenty-five artists that performed, that were part of the plein air paintout last year. They were only limited to one during, or due to COVID, so it was pretty cool. So I believe the three pieces of art, the, they have them at the Falls Pharmacy, so you can actually go and vote and pick your favorite. And then they'll pick the finalists, so. Okay, so anyway, it was a great event. So thank you, everyone, for doing that. And there's a new form on the website for residents to report sidewalk trip hazards to our Parks and Public Works group. And these will be added to the list for our ongoing sidewalk repair program. We do have special workshops coming up. One is tomorrow, six P.M., Council of Deliberations on the mill site. We just talked about the two that are coming up, August twenty-ninth and thirtieth, for special F and A meeting to continue work on financial policies. And the September eighth City Council Special Workshop Regarding the Mill Site. There will also be a town hall here on Wednesday at six P.M. It's by Congresswoman Kim Schreier and includes Superintendent Dr. Gibbons from the Snoqualmie Valley School District. And so the theme's going to be back to school, so you're welcome to stop in. And we, I guess finally, we are asking for patience during this time since we do not have a city clerk and we have various people such as Regina McCullough that is filling in, so. Thank you. Okay. Moving on, the other, the item is Commission or Committee Liaison Reports. So there any Commission and Committee Reports? Mayor Pro Tim Mayhew?
Yeah, so the Human Services Advisory Committee has launched their sort of effort as they come into the biennial process. This is just a fantastic group of residents. You know, I, I know all of you in your liaison roles are as amazed as I am at the quality and the commitment of residents who serve on these committees and councils. This is just another fantastic group that does incredible work. And they actually do meet throughout the whole biennium. They have a process that leads up to their recommendations, first to the mayor and then to us for the human services budget for the biennium, but then
But then they continue meeting through the whole next two years. They regularly meet and review. They ask for reports from each of the organizations that receive funding, about how that funding's being used, the amount of service delivery, measurements of service delivery, and they monitor to make sure that what they were, that what we were all hoping would happen with those funds, in fact, does happen, and then they factor that into their future recommendations back to us. So it's a fantastic group. They've kicked off their process. They've, they're relooking at their process of ranking proposals. They have reviewed the application form, and that's gone out now to social service agencies. For anyone watching this, if you are aware of any social service agency in Snoqualmie or serving Snoqualmie residents, those applications are available now. The deadline is coming up, so please, please let us know of the needs so the council's aware of them, so that this committee's aware of them and can make recommendations. But they're off, often running. If any of you have any further questions, you can let staff know or let me know and happy to pass those along or answer any questions you have. But really excited that they're off and running. It's just a fantastic group.
Counselor Johnson, I think you skipped over your community development report, sorry.
It's okay. So I guess I'll say no report on that and then on this. So for the next, or not the next, but the next next, one after the next, Community Development Committee meeting, we are going to do that inviting the rest of the council to join us, as well as the Planning Commission and the Economic Development Commission to review a short course on local planning. The mayor provided me with a very nice flyer here. It's got all the details. It'll be on Monday, September nineteenth. And it will be via Zoom. Not sure if the room will be available or not.
Will be.
Okay, so you could go, you could join us via Zoom or here in the chambers. And what it's going to do is it's going to review the legal basis for planning in Washington. And perhaps the most important thing in the fairly near future is a review of the comprehensive plan and the basics of comprehensive planning, since that will be coming up in short order. So that was part of the reason why we wanted to do this at this time. And for, oh, there's also a section, a segment on the roles and responsibilities of local planning. But there's also an opportunity for any of our commissioners or council members who need to go through the process of updating their O P M A certification, training, whatever you call it, training thing, that you could do that. I believe they need to do it once every four years or so. But anyway, so if you need that, then that's another thing that will be offered that evening. So come and join us, and it'll be fun.
And that is an optional event.
Say again?
I said that is an optional event, so.
Right.
Counselor Watten.
Thank you. To follow that meeting, then on September twenty-second, the Chamber of Commerce and I are hosting the Snoqualmie Valley Housing Summit from one to four. We've got some outstanding individuals coming, some that live here in the valley, here in Snoqualmie, as panelists. But includes the city of Covington, city of Snoqualmie, city of Sammamish will be there, city of North Bend. We have some nonprofits that will be joining us as panelists from Cirque Living. Master Builders will be there, Homestead Community Land Trust, and also a couple banks, Banner Bank and another one that happens to be in Snoqualmie. I'm Qua, I believe it is. So anyway, it's open to the public. And because we are holding this at the North Bend Theater, we will be able to accommodate anyone who is interested in attending in person. So I look forward to anybody that's interested in coming, and and there is a website now that's up. And I'll make sure that the council has that in a registration form. So thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Christensen.
So I serve on the King County or the King Conservation District as well on their advisory council. And we met, I believe it was last week or a week or two ago. The updates there were just getting the grants out to cities which are eligible for them. I believe that the city of Snoqualmie is pursuing a few. And they're also offering grants available to homeowners who want to basically better the land on their property. So if you have questions or interest, feel free to reach out.
Any other committee council reports, liaison reports? Okay, seeing none. So the next regular meeting is September twelfth, twenty twenty-two. There will be no further business to come before council. I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So move second.
By Counselor Howie and second by Counselor Watten to adjourn. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed, nay? Yep, so it's unanimous. The time is now seven fifty P M, and we are adjourned. Thank you.